Well, welcome everyone to our special committee of the whole meeting. It got extra hot here, I don't know what we're doing. It's always a pleasure to see my colleagues here and we are have a special committee of the whole meeting this evening. So I'm officially opening the Kalamazoo City Commission Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2024. And our first order of business is roll call. Clerk Forling.
Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
President.
Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Wilson. Vice Mayor Hess.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here, thank you Clerk Forling. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioners Cooney, Wilson, and Pradel, please?
So moved. It's part.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess, supported by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you so much. Next, Communications Manager Isma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is an opportunity for public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone who is here in the chambers to make a comment. You will have two minutes. You can talk on any topic that you would like. Just as a reminder, this is not a time for dialogue, but this is your time to provide any comments or concerns to the commission. Yes? Whether you live in the city.
Although I have come to proclaim liberty to the captives, I find myself as a prisoner of war into this world and choosing God as my master and rejecting manon. I have become subjected to involuntary servitude in order to free my people of the shackles that bind, actively fighting to give us the promised inheritance of the new mind. I have no choice but to serve my God, for with the evidence I have been created for my role. It's only within the world I am the captive daughter of Zion, for in my maker's plan I am seated as the queen of the south who rose. I ask you, have we all not been called into joint inheritance to walk within the royal priesthood? Royalty is a responsibility, is to be a servant unto our God and a protector of life. You know that the heirs of this world exercised dominion over them, but it shall not be so among the chief of you. The chief will be your servant. Since coming out of the wilderness in Revelation 12, I've had no spake of my own to continue formatting the vision that grows. The foxes have holes and the bird of the air have nests, the daughter of women has nowhere to lay her head. The corner of south and rose has become my home. In this period of being held publicly in Mizzou, I have done what I can to build on this prophesied ground. Doth not wisdom cry, and understanding not put forth her voice? Shake thyself from thy dust, arise and sit down. I present myself directly before the highest ranking officials of my city, although this proclamation is of the freedom to come and is also a plea from a prisoner of war to be freed. I know there is one that has held complete authority in this time, however, my civil rights as a citizen have been violated. The question of my sovereignty, my citizenship, will further be investigated by calling the current occupying powers to protect me by providing safe accommodation and lodging. I would like to invoke Article 13, Section 2 of the Geneva Convention. Likewise, prisoners of war must at all times be projected, protected, particularly or against acts of violence, intimidation, acts of insults, and public curiosity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a comment this evening?
Hi, my name is Shona Espinoza and I live in the city. We need to have some warming shelters. I don't know how many times we have went downtown to make sure that people are inside the mission, if they get kicked out, find a place for them to be warm. It's freezing outside. Last week was extremely cold outside. The mission is probably one of the places that they can warm up in, but there should be places that's 24/7 for them to be warm. It's cold outside, it's freezing, and we don't want nobody to freeze. There's children out here on the street, there's infants, there's those that are pregnant, those that are disabled, our veterans, none of them should be out on the street. We need warming centers. We need plenty of warming centers that are 24/7 and they can access it easily instead of having like the one on Tuesday and Thursday, I think it's over from 10 to 2. Like, it's cold at night. I mean, it's cold during the day, but it's even colder at night. So we need something that's going to keep them warm even at night. We got some people sleeping in porta-potties. We got people sleeping together. I mean, they're spread out throughout downtown and other places in Kalamazoo County, trying to keep warm and trying to survive because it's freezing cold. We even have children out here and we know that children need to be inside, they need to be safe, because being outside is not safe, it's dangerous. Between the weather, the elements, other people out here, and just what's really going on in the heart of Kalamazoo, they could be harmed. Me going down there, I've seen a lot, and I've never experienced a lot of stuff that I've seen from being downtown, and there's a lot going on. And I'm a grown woman, and it's taken me back to times when I was growing up. So our children should not have to see this. So please, please look into and come down, and thank you, Decker, for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to comment this evening?
Yes, hello, my name is Chase Patti. I would just like to agree with my friend Shona that there is not being enough being done or talked about how to solve the crisis that this city is in. It's a housing crisis and it's a homelessness crisis. There's, there's families, veterans, kids. People, people have no options and there's nothing being, being done or no plans being made, there's no, there's no deadlines, there's no, where's the, the plan where people can, can come and ask for options, to ask for help? Like, hey, I, I need, I need a place to stay, I, I lost my job, I, I need somewhere to go tonight, like, I, I got evicted. Like, where, where are people supposed to go for, for this help if the city is doing nothing? The warming shelters the city posted, they are, they are insufficient and they are closed by like 4:00 PM, and it is, it is cold at night and it is unsafe that there is no safe place for people to go. There is no, there is no public place where, where people can, can just get out of the elements and be safe in this city. So it is this commission, commission's responsibility to talk about it and to make a plan for emergency shelters and to talk with the other emergency managers in this city to make a concrete plan for an emergency shelter and warming shelters that is city-run and city-funded and city-staffed, because, because relying on private organizations is, is not enough. Relying on the library to do something to keep their doors open is not enough. The city needs to do something.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comments this evening?
Good evening, Toby Hannah-Davies, and I do live in the city. I just want to thank you for the money that's in the budget for home sharing program to be planned. I am very pleased about this. I believe that home sharing will make available a lot of apartments and even houses in the community, because home sharing means that people who have more house than they need, like I did for a long time, will be able to have a good match with someone to invite into their home to share that space. I've done this with four different matches, and I really recommend this as a way to create more affordable housing in our community. And I'm so grateful to all of you for voting at the February retreat to put money into the budget and for it to be in the plan for 2025, and that Milestone Senior Services is very excited about being the matchmaker that will do the work to find homeowners who would like to have someone share their space with them for rent or for free, depending on the circumstances of the families involved, and for people in the community who would rather live in a home with someone and share chores or be companions or whatever's needed. I'm very pleased, this program is working really well in other states. In Pennsylvania, I believe every single county has a home sharing program. So there's great opportunity here for us to suddenly find all this affordable housing in our community that is from people like me who have grown children, grown grandchildren, know.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
My name is Angela Manning again, and I want to just give a great big thanks to Commissioner Decker for coming out and showing her support to the unhoused with a bowl of pot of chili. I'd also like to invite all of you on Friday nights to be able to come out and just see and interact with the homeless and notice what their struggles, their, you know, their strengths, their weaknesses, all the things that you might be missing when you're in here, being busy with what you guys do. So every Friday, about 5 o'clock, 5:30, 6:00, everybody is welcome, and we'd love to see you out there, and so would everybody else. Another thing that I would like to say is that in the ministries with the communities, I've noticed a lot of things happening. There's too many people getting kicked out to go into the cold, I mean, like, anything will kick them out, they'll kick them all out. They're very rude, the staff is very rude, they're very, there's no professionalism to it at all, which I feel like that should be a learning environment anyways, to, to have people going back into society towards a stepping stone instead of being a complacent place to be. Just a lot of things like, just, you know, it's just unethical, unethical things that are going on behind the policies of those doors, and it's just, it makes me sad. I seen a veteran last night, you know, he had four police reports just that day, got kicked out of church, this and that. If somebody would intervene before that and be following up, like, just as far as the resources go in there with the social workers, I mean, there's no up-to-date landlord list, there's no up-to-date private landlord list, there's nothing that gives them any resources that they can do on their own. There's no computers, for anybody to get on there, like you said, going to the library might be a little bit difficult for a lot of people. I mean, there's just a couple of different things that I think that they could really, everybody could really benefit from, so that they can use their time wisely there instead of be there and know that they're gonna get fed three meals a day and be complacent so they don't ever go anywhere with their life, but, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
I couldn't help but noticing that, and the timing's kind of, kind of far out too, in light of the recent shooting, but there appears to be like a certain fund that someone has maybe gifted Kalamazoo with for the special purpose of, you know, gun violence, you know? And that made me start thinking that, I wondered if our law enforcement had the kind of gun detection technology that like Detroit does, where you can, you know, even from your vehicle, or the kind that will detect the particles in the air, like, let's say someone has fired a gun recently, they have that device. So I guess what I'm asking is, any of that money gonna get spent towards that? Because it's like, it seems like every time I, yeah, we meet, something else horrible has happened, you know? You know, I, eh, then we gotta, we gotta get to the bottom of it, don't we? So since this is budget-related, I thought I'd wanna bring that up. I don't know what monies, if any, that you guys have earmarked for anything to do with homelessness, but whatever you could do is, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers who'd like to provide comments during this public comment period? All right, Sean Nolan, I want to thank everyone that took the time, made the effort to come down here and provide comments for the commission. Next, we're moving into the work session for this evening, which is focused on the proposed 2025 budget. Manager Isma.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and glad to see everyone here this evening to look at our 2025 proposed budget, and if we could get the presentation loaded here, it'd be great. Just want to let people know that our proposed budget is online at kalamazuacity.org/budget, and actually, 2025 and previous year's budgets are all listed there. We have opportunities for commenting on the budget proposal. We, our public hearing is next Monday, the 16th, and there'll be a public hearing component of that to take comments on the budget, and then on the 6th of January, we'll be back and asking for the commission to approve the budget, so comments may be shared at that meeting as well. And folks can also email comments to clkcitymanager@kalamazuacity.org. Just want to take a look back at how we got to where we of inputs that we received to the budget. Back in January 23, we did the community survey, and then 24, we surveyed the commission as we went into our commission retreat last February, and that prepare or gave us the priorities and, and focus areas of what we wanted to develop the 2025 budget around. So we tasked our departments to come up with programs and special requests that are in line with the priorities that the city commission has laid out for the coming year, and you'll see that this evening in our presentation. And then just the general development of the budget, operating budgets were due in September of 2024, and then 2020, October, we, we reviewed the budgets internally, and that led up to the budget being released, and November, I believe the 15th, was when we released it. So all the way up to tonight's meeting, and then, like I said, in January, we will be coming back with budget approval. I'm gonna ask our Chief Operating Officer Laura Lamb to come forward and, and give you some more information on how we developed this coming year's budget. Laura?
Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Jen mentioned that we had a community survey that was done in '23. Right now, that is the most current survey we have. We are gonna be initiating a new community survey in January of '25, but for right now, we use this graphic to kind of high-level what we learned from that community survey. What you'll see here, you've got importance on the x-axis and you've got quality on the y-axis. What that tells us are the programs, the services that our community thinks are high importance, low importance, high quality, low quality. We really try to draw our attention to the lower right-hand quadrant, where we see areas that our residents have said are important to them, but they feel that there's room for improvement in terms of service delivery. There you'll see mobility, economy, utilities, and safety. So certainly, as we have a number of different inputs into the budgeting process, we try to keep the resident voice front and center in terms of where we direct our energy. So as Jen mentioned, we held our city commission retreat in February of this year, doesn't seem like it was that long ago, and yet, here we are. Heading into that retreat, we had a couple of things that we were working on. We obviously have Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, our strategic vision. We asked the commission to prioritize outcomes from Imagine Kalamazoo, from those priorities. We worked with our staff to really assemble strategies that we're currently employing or we'd like to employ that we think would best help us achieve those outcomes. At the retreat itself, we went through and talked about all the potential strategies that could help us achieve outcomes, and the city commission went through and evaluated those strategies based on impact and difficulty. With all of that work, we landed on these sort of top five strategies that then help inform the department requests that come in for the budget and our review and our preparation for the budget itself. So we got a lot of inputs coming in, and ultimately, we're here to kind of give you an overview of the budget itself. But really importantly is, what does this budget mean for our community? What's, what's it gonna make a difference in the lives of the people that we serve? It means that we're gonna be supporting our families, that we're gonna be investing in neighborhoods, that we're gonna help youth reach their full potential. It means that we're gonna ensure the safety and well-being of our community, and it means that we're gonna continue to strengthen our city organization. Now I want to provide some very high-level program and project highlights, starting with supporting Kalamazoo families. Excited to have our 25 budget include 1.7 million in our housing development fund. There's really a three-pronged strategy that staff want to employ with these dollars, providing gap financing for mixed-income, multi-use family housing, which we've talked quite a bit about on many of commission meetings, continuing to provide financing to make those projects possible and to get the units that we know that our community so desperately needs. It also helps to support rehabilitation of housing, preserving our existing housing stock with an effort to try to help promote affordable homeownership. And lastly, continuing to find creative ways to cover appraisal gaps. We know the market is not in our favor as we're trying to produce more and more housing units, so how can we cover appraisal gaps and how can we continue to look at rental subsidies that can make the housing that we're helping to produce and rehab actually be affordable? We're excited about RX Kids Kalamazoo in the budget, there's been a lot of discussion on that, but just high level, again, this is a cash allowance for every birth that's gonna take place in the city of Kalamazoo after the program launch. That is anticipated to happen early next year, and based on trends, that could help as many of 840 births in the city of Kalamazoo. This program provides a prenatal payment of $1,500 and then a $500 a month payment for the first 12 years of life, ultimately equalling $7,500 per baby. The 1.5 million that's in the budget is part of 8.5 million that's been raised locally to support this program. We are very, very close to the 10 million goal that allows us to have funding in place for the first two years of the program. They're gonna continue to fundraise with the hope of having a full five years of the pilot funded to be able to support. Also, I want to remind ourselves that this, our funding and the local funds raised is leveraging 1.4 million in TANA funds, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. This was actually supported in the state budget, a total of 20 million was approved by the state to support RX Kids expansion, and 1.4 million of that is gonna be here locally leveraging our dollars. In terms of childcare business supports, this has been an ongoing priority for the commission. We want to continue to build on the good work of Southwest Childcare Resources and trying to find ways to support our home-based childcare businesses. We believe this helps increase access for our families. We also want to support those business owners, help them with their businesses, how can they be more efficient, how can they help with their networks, how can we help to continue to provide this valuable service for our community? And lastly, as we heard Toby acknowledge, the home share program, we're excited to be able to launch a feasibility study to understand this great model, how do we make this work here in Kalamazoo, and how can we begin to understand the impact it could have in helping to match people in housing? For a homeowner, that can provide some income, it can provide companionship all across the board, it can also help us identify new housing units in an, in an area that we know we have a lot of need to cover. In terms of investing in our neighborhoods, we're excited to continue the critical code repair program, in this case, of working in partnership with Community Homeworks, helping low-income households be able to preserve their home, stay in their home, and really address critical repairs in order for that to happen. In terms of small business capacity building, these funds are, are really supporting two different programs. You've got the Core 60 program, this is a three-week intensive training, it's offered by Room 35, and it's designed to help skilled construction business owners really work on getting their licensing and getting their networks to be able to get their business to scale. This will also support Black Entrepreneur Training Academy, or the Beta Program, and this is a collaboration between Black Wall Street and Sisters in Business. It's a cohort-like training that really helps build skills, capacity, and capital for our businesses to help promote. We've seen some really great success coming out of these programs, we're excited to double down and keep up the effort. In terms of parks improvements, in our general fund with our parks, we've got 375,000 going in for Mellon Park, we've got over 500,000, that's gonna continue to support the construction of the multi-use building at our farmer's market, we've got 40,000 going in for Freys Park, and we've got dollars in the budget to be able to help Kick Pool get a new boiler, which is pretty important if you use Kick Pool. In terms of streets and sidewalks, in our local streets, we have over $800,000 supporting our local streets. That only does this help with preventative improvements, so we can preserve the assets we have, but it also helps to address critical street projects across the city in our neighborhoods. We also have 15.5 million in our major streets capital improvement program. We're gonna see the largest investments made on West Main Street, Kalamazoo Avenue, and Douglas. Lastly, we're excited to celebrate the continuation of our sidewalk program. We know we have a lot of sidewalks to address, we've been able to invest a million each year, and we're starting to catch up. This 1.3 million in the budget helps us repair and replace sidewalks, curbs, gutters, ramps, a number of pedestrian amenities that help people access places in our community they want to go. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy City Manager Kick, she's gonna continue to take over some high-level programs and projects.
Thank you, COO Lamb. Welcome, Rebecca Kick.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I want to talk about the investments that help our young people thrive. So with our programs that we have been supporting over the past three years, we're gonna invest another million dollars into some of these incredible programs that help our young people thrive. These are youth employment programs, activities, and events, and that also includes some of our youth athletics. These are summer camps that we know impact hundreds of our campers each year, also our Continued Youth Action Council. These include our counseling and training programs, which participants receive, about $500 each. These education programs help to teach teens leadership, teamwork, self-confidence, working with kids, and communication skills that help them transition into the, into the workforce as well. Our Kalamazoo Youth Action Council program provides input into Kalamazoo parks regarding programs, activities, and events that youth are engaged in. These youth also learn life skills from these programs as well. The Youth Employment Program in collaboration with K-RISA NYOU to employ area youth ages from 14 to 21 years old. Those programs are held for nine weeks in the summer. Other investments that we're doing to ensure safety and well-being are the continued investment in our Bridging Opportunities Youth Program. As you know, from many of the datas that we have showed you from our public safety are for the reduction of juvenile violence. The continued investment in bridging opportunities has helped to bring those numbers down. We will also continue to expand the License Plate Reader Program. The data in 2024 again shows that expansion into the license plate readers will show the continued for more rapidly locating and stopping stolen vehicles and apprehending of those criminals. That investment will be another $100,000 into expanding those license plate readers. The Arcadia Creek Protect Grant is the largest grant in the country to be assisting with floodway and flood mitigation and remediation. The continued lead service line replacements in the Edison neighborhood, as you know, we've celebrated our 5,000th lead line replacement, which is an incredible milestone for the city of Kalamazoo. And so that continued replacement and investment of 14.5 million dollars in 2025 will be an incredible milestone again for our city. With more than $122 million in water infrastructure investments and over $12 million in wastewater capital improvements, Kalamazoo is continuing to show that safety of its water and wastewater improvements is amongst our priorities. We also continue to show investment in critical repairs of our public safety facilities as it is essential to our operations. We also, this really goes to show our, creating a stronger city organization We also, this really goes to show our, creating a stronger city organization goes for our good governance. Our DEI strategic planning, developing a DEI strategic plan based on our progress and gaps that remain from our 2021 MPHI assessment. So we'll be doing another $115,000 investment into developing that DEI strategic plan. We're also working on the crosstown facility repurposing. We have capital improvement funds that will consolidate and rehabilitate that to better support the needs of several departments and enhance operations. As you know, the core facilities moved out of that into their new facility last year. And so we will be consolidating some of our offices into that new facility. Also, our geographic information system, GIS mapping, will also make it easier to make sure that we have accurate maps that are assisting both our public and private sector with those new maps. And then we will have internal access control upgrades, obviously for cybersecurity enhancements. And if any of us have been able to see and read about what's happened to either gorgeous hospital or any other municipalities, we know how critical it is that we invest into our cybersecurity infrastructure at this time. And I'll go ahead and pass this on to our CFO, Steve Isensi.
Thank you, Rebecca Kick. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm going to run you through some of the numbers behind a lot of the projects that were just presented to you and kind of go through the budget from a high level of exactly what it means for our different funding sources and expenses. So just kicking off, the 2025 budget increases 35% to 388 million. It's a bit of a, it's a huge swing. However, there's one project that is causing majority of this swing, which I'll talk about more in a minute. But if we remove that one project, we actually see a 3% decrease in our budget from 2024 to 2025. Majority of that was being caused by the reduction in ARPA funds being budgeted going forward. Our general fund continues to have a balanced budget where we anticipate maintaining our fund balance target of over 15% of operating revenues over the next five years. We are including $180 million of capital investment. And our residents continue to see the benefit from the FFE where we have increased services and continued lower tax rates. And just to kind of highlight there, the FFE is contributing 15.9 million towards tax reduction, 4.9 million is budget stabilization funds to the general fund, and $5 million towards aspirational projects. As I mentioned, we have one project that's really swaying the overall number in the budget. It's a $110 million Drinking Water State Revolving Fund project, DWSRF. This was presented with the water rates this year. It is included in those rates going forward. This project will be focused on PFOS treatment, lead service line replacements, and water main replacements. We are still working with some of our partner communities, and we'll be finalizing the exact number for that during 2025 as we finish work with the state. That program also allows for reduction interest rates between 1% to 2.75%, depending on whether the project is considered overburdened and the length of time of the borrowing. Just for reference, you know, typical borrowing for a 25-year bond for a utility system would cost 3.75%. And over a 25-year period, that could be as high as $15 million in additional interest that is saved by using the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. Since 2020, the DWSRF has provided grants of nearly $10 million in principal forgiveness awarded over $20 million. And the $110 million program that was presented to you included potentially $20 million in grant forgiveness. Our governmental funds for 2025, excuse me, in the year, decreased slightly to, or we maintain our expenditure level of 146 million. We're seeing standard inflationary increases in expenses. However, that is being offset by the reduction from no longer having ARPA going forward. And just to kind of walk the public through our different funds. We have our capital improvement funds, which is where we do our large improvements to city buildings, parks, that sort of activity. We have our special revenue funds, which include grant funds, our local streets, our major streets, and our solid waste funds. Those are funds that have revenue sources that are not taxes. And then we have our general fund, which includes our general operating expenditures, and it's funded majority from property taxes. Stepping back to the overall full budget, we see our proprietary funds, our governmental funds. I just walked through the governmental funds. Proprietary funds are our water, our wastewater, and our parking system. Those are funds where you charge a fee for the service that you receive. You do not have taxes going into those funds. They are self-supporting based on the fees that are there to provide that service. And another term for proprietary funds are enterprise funds because they are operated like a business. We continue to see, we see the large increase in our water fund, and that's due to that DWSRF project that I discussed. And then we see the continued use of our parking system and improvements to our wastewater system. Our general fund revenue is expected to increase 4.9% to 85 million for the year. You can see the breakdown of the different revenue sources that we have, with taxes being the largest at 32%. FFE contributing 25% of our budget. State grants and revenue sharing providing 22% of our budget. And then we do have fees for service that contribute 13.8% to the total budget. You know, a large change from year over year is the anticipation of the distribution from the state's Public Safety Trust Fund. That was newly created this year in the state's budget. We're anticipating receiving up to $1.8 million from that fund to help support our ongoing public safety efforts. And then a common question that happens because people receive a tax bill, they come to City Hall, they pay it, they wonder where their taxes go. And on a typical tax bill, 47% of your taxes are made up of education millages. And that is a combination of KBCC, KRESA, and local school debt millages as well. Then we have city operations at little over 23% of your total tax bill. And this is including your summer and winter taxes combined. About 12% go to operating your county, between their public safety millage, their operating millage, and their debt service millage. And then we have 7% for library funds. And we have a host of other funds that are supported between solid waste, county housing, transit, 911, and our veterans and housing millages. So hopefully, this can help explain a little bit of when people come to pay that bill, exactly where are those dollars going because they don't all stay here. General fund expenses are expected to increase 3.96%. We will be maintaining a balanced budget. Last year, we had a small dispersal of excess fund balance to pay for one-time projects. That came off this year, so now we see revenues increasing a little bit faster than expenses, but we end up at a balanced state between revenues and expenses. And then here, we just have the breakdown between our different departments. The budget does support 13 new positions. One of these was actually, our Grants Compliance Specialist was approved recently in November since the budget was posted. But really, this is an investment in our core city processes and our utilities. So you see a budget analyst, a Grants Compliance Specialist. Given the large amount of grants that we are receiving and working through, that's a necessary expense to make sure that we're staying compliant so that we can continue to receive those funds and receive future consideration for grants. We also included a mechanical inspector, a parks coordinator, a site plan review engineer, and a systems analyst to support IT. From here, we also supported in the utility funds four water positions, a utility billing coordinator, and then also two wastewater positions. These are to increase capacity for operations as those funds continue to expend large amounts of capital, which is necessary for reinvestment in our infrastructure. Beyond, we also have our fund balance target, as I mentioned before. We're maintaining that through the five-year plan. Based on where we are, we do expect a dip in 2026 and then recovery back to normal going forward in 2027. In 2026, we have a large debt service payment that then drops off. And then we, so we are planning for, you know, an overspend next year to reduce our fund balance, but then maintaining above our targets. The overall budget includes $180 million in capital across all of our funds, so a significant increase, again largely due to the $110 million DWRF project, which you see here, related to PFOS compliance, system reliability improvements, continuing our lead service line replacements, and treatment station improvements. We also have $12.3 million budgeted in our wastewater treatment fund. This is to help us maintain regulatory compliance, continue our increased investment as we have over the past five years. And then we're also planning for the future. So this is not presented here, but it is in the full five-year plan, which can be found on our website as part of the budget book. We are planning for a future treatment, bio, sorry, excuse me, bio-solid treatment process, which is a project that could cost over $100 million as well. We're looking to apply for Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is similar to that DWSRF, where we'd have the reduced interest rate, potentially principal forgiveness, and also potential grants that would go into that project as well. And just to kind of highlight that project a little bit further, that project, as much as it would be a large capital increase, would result in a significant decrease in our operating fund for the wastewater. So we're hoping to have a large portion of that debt service offset by reduced operations going forward. We're continuing to invest $16.4 million into our streets next year. This is coming, 14 million of that comes from outside sources. So we have our RCP grant, Reconnecting Communities Pilot Grant. That's the conversion of Kalamazoo Michigan Avenue to two-way streets. Our RAISE grant, Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. That's to help design Kalamazoo, Michigan, and other construction downtown. And then we also receive our jurisdictional transfer, which is funding that was received from the state of Michigan for taking local control of some of our roads. That's funding that they provided to help us maintain and improve those roads that they would have, that the state otherwise would have been spending at this time. And then finally, we have CATS, which is our Kalamazoo Area Transportation Study. It's a regional group that provides coordinated transportation planning for our urban area. And there's funding that comes from the federal government through that group to help with our street program. And then here, we just have a tentative timeline of our grants. So some of these funds, you're going to see all sorts of different grants that are going to be compiled starting in 2024 through 2030. You know, we approve these on an annual basis. Some of these will carry forward from one year to the next. And just kind of a highlight for people of, we've had significant investment in 2024. We're continuing that in 25, and that's expected to continue for the next five years. Continuing on, our general and parking capital improvement plan includes $8.8 million in continued investments. You heard a number of those earlier tonight, between Millam Park, our Farmers Market multipurpose building, Parks Department equipment, KDPS building maintenance, crosstown facility redesign. We're also including, you know, city hall maintenance projects that are necessary to maintain our buildings and parking garage safety repairs, which have become imperative at this time. And then here, we show the capital funding by source. So we have our DWSRF, which I've spoken about quite a bit from the state. We have regular bonds and reserves of 55 million, intergovernmental grants of 12.2 million, jurisdictional transfer funds of 1.8 million, and then other funds on hand of 1.3 million. And then moving into our American Rescue Plan Act SLFRF funding. The city has fully allocated that as of earlier this year. We went through a budget amendment back in September. And so just a quick highlight that we originally received $38.9 million in ARPA funds. We have budgeted over $40.9 million due to increased interest that was earned on those funds as they were with us. The federal government allowed us to keep that interest. We've then put that into additional plans as we've continued through. And just a highlight of where we're at, we budgeted, or we, yeah, we had projects of $10.9 million for affordable housing, $7.3 million towards youth programming, $4.6 million replaces lost revenue between our streets and parking funds that were impacted by the pandemic. Another $4.4 million that could be allocated across multiple areas of our goal, multiple goal areas that we spent ARPA funding on. $4.1 million directly invested into our business improvements and public amenities. Another $4.1 million in our infrastructure, including tree planting, street construction, and cemetery restoration, and stormwater pipes. And then $3.7 million went towards public safety. And finally, $1.8 million towards good governance, which includes election improvements, DEI planning, and other in compliance work that was required to make sure that we were spending these funds properly. And that's the end of my formal presentation. So at this point, we'll open up for questions and discussion. We do have all of our directors here to help with any specifics as well.
Thank you, Mr. Isensi. I appreciate that. Manager Isensi, anything else?
Nope, we'll open it up for discussion. And as Steve mentioned, we have all of our directors in the back there, ready to answer any questions that come up, so.
Thank you, sir. A great-looking group of people. So Commissioners, a lot here. This has obviously just been our really first opportunity to have an overview. This is, the size of this budget, I have to say, is something that I could not have imagined years ago. We've got, obviously, a lot of capital investment going on this year that's really boosting it. But now is our first opportunity to publicly talk about this, and we'll have other opportunities coming up. Are there questions for particular directors or the city manager at this time? Commissioner Decker.
Thanks, Mayor. So I want to say thank you to the team. You guys did a great job. Thank you, Steve, Laura, Rebecca. You guys always put a lot of work into this between you and the departments. So I was, I think about the amount of funding and the grant that we just received to help with gun violence. And then, you know, I was going through some of the, you know, some of our past presentations that we've had. And, you know, I believe also that one way of being able to combat gun violence is to be able to have an area for kids and our young adults to go. So I was kind of looking at some of the parks funding there. And back in January of 2024, there was a master plan summary for the parks and some quick wins and some things of, you know, that we could do for some of the parks that were in the area. And when I look at what we have within our budget, I don't believe I see any of these parks on there. And some of these are quick wins. You know, some of these were $10,000 up to $50,000. So I guess I'm just wondering if we can talk about what's going on specifically. We know about the Kick Pool Boiler, but really what's going on specifically with regards to Millam Park and the $375,000 that's going there, Freys Park and the $40,000 that's going there. And we already know what's going on with the Farmers Market. So I'm just kind of wondering if we can talk about what improvements we're really talking about doing with these versus doing some of these great quick wins within the parks and recs that we had a great summary on.
Welcome, Director McFarry.
Thank you. That's a good question, Commissioner Decker. So the Millam Park capital improvement plans that are coming up, the $375,000 that you see is part of the extension of continuing the stream work.